I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd also like to note that we have Cindy McMahon, Amy Churchill, and Peggy Buchanan joining us remotely by Zoom. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Donna Pate. I approve. I make the motion that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Could I get a second?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to call your name. Peggy Buchanan? Is it okay with you, Peggy?
I think she's muted.
I think she is, too. Pat's giving me a signal that he's okay. Amy Churchill?
Yes.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Yes.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. I'll go back to Peggy Buchanan.
Aye.
Okay. We're ready to go. It's time for the superintendent's comments. Dr. Baldwin.
Good afternoon, everyone. As we close out the 2019-2020 school year, I want to begin my comments by thanking each and every member of our Buncombe County School staff and family, whether they are based within the district office or out in one of our 44 schools and programs, whether they're certified as a director, principal, classroom teacher, and counselor, or classified as an instructional assistant, custodian, office staff, child nutrition worker, and bus driver. An enthusiastic thank you for a job well done under tremendously challenging times. While COVID-19 shed an ominous cloud of constant and unpredictable, and yeah, I'll say the word, unprecedented change, the consistent theme throughout was the dedicated and efficient response of our staff. From March 16th, the first day our schools were closed, through June 1, over 1 million meals were provided to our Buncombe County Schools students and their families. 1 million meals, breakfasts and lunches provided to our BCS students. Virtual instruction was fully launched across the entire county, Buncombe County School system, by the third day that we were closed. While it was never intended to fully replace the physical classroom teaching model, our teachers and support staff made over-the-top efforts to connect with students through lots of creativity and inspiration that was blended in their instruction. And I think I can comfortably speak for the entire board in saying once again, "Thank Although we were unable to conduct traditional ceremonies, graduating seniors from the 10 Buncombe County High Schools programs, secondary programs, will be recognized through a virtual commencement, as well as a diploma pickup and special recognition event that will be held on their school's campus. COVID-19 has been difficult on all of our students. It's been difficult on all of us, but especially our seniors, who have missed out on such important activities, including proms, spring sports seasons, senior trips, and that's just to name a few. Despite these setbacks and disappointments, I want to thank the schools' principals and the staff, faculty and staff, along with our communications department, our little engine it could, for such dedicated efforts under these circumstances to provide celebratory events to recognize these members of the special class of 2020. And I would say that I hope that if you have an opportunity to at least select one of those campuses, traditional campuses, tomorrow, stop by and maybe from a distance. Oh, Saturday, I have to remember today is Thursday. Saturday, those diploma drop-offs and virtual graduation ceremonies will be launched. But stop by, maybe even from a distance, just see all the great things that are going on on that campus. While graduating the class of 2020, along with finalizing records to close out the 1920 school year, are the highest priorities that immediately face us, I want all of our internal and external family of stakeholders to know that planning for the reentry into 2020, 2021 school year is already fully underway. We have established a district-wide steering committee that will be reporting back to this school board once a comprehensive base plan for reentry is developed. The components of our plan will include the following eight areas of focus: communication and stakeholder engagement, basic auxiliary services, instructional delivery and support, employee health, safety, and social emotional health; student health, safety, and social emotional health; student special populations; policy, legislation, and funding; and extracurricular activities, including athletics. Each of these focus areas, in turn, have an active team of stakeholders, principals, teachers, counselors, parents, and community stakeholders that are currently delving into the details of their particular area. Our intent is to create an active, fluid resource with a solid foundation of protocol and practical guidelines that will be flexible enough to handle the revisions that will certainly be coming our way from state, federal, and local experts and sources. The timeline is challenging. Beginning June 15, we will need to address extracurricular conditioning and skill development activities for secondary students and staff participating in sports, as well as extracurricular areas in the arts. Likewise, the jumpstart and summer learning programs that will serve designated 3rd and 4th graders will fall under specific to-be-determined operating guidelines. I would end by saying that all of us recognize the paramount role that communications will play in the actual success of any plan that we develop, educating our school community and public regarding what our school campuses will look like, and the safety-first protocol that will be in place once our facilities are open to students. That is absolutely essential to any successful reentry. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. The next item, we have no public comment tonight. We are beginning the action agenda. The first item on the action agenda is the 2019-2020 budget amendment number 17. Are there questions from the board for Ms. Frisbee? Hearing none. I would ask for a motion to approve budget amendments number 7.
Madam Chair, this is Cindy McMahon. I move that we approve this budget amendment.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Donna Pate.
Peggy Buchanan.
Okay. Thank you. I have to do it by roll call. So Peggy Buchanan, are you in favor?
Aye.
Pat Bryant, thumbs up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
And Anne Franklin. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 2020-2021 revised academic calendar. This is Ms. Swanger. Would you like to speak to us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Swanger? Being Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Baldwin, if you remember, you approved the 2021 calendar before COVID. And I'm back to you for another calendar revision. The General Assembly through Senate Bill 704 charged us in changing our calendar to meet some new mandates. Our calendar committee met a couple of weeks ago, and surprisingly, we had 19 members present, and we are presenting a new calendar to you that meets those guidelines. So I want to just hit a couple of those differences. The calendar is now composed of 185 days, which includes five scheduled remote learning days. We are also required to include five in-person instruction days as part of the 185-day total. Those days are currently set for our beginning of school, August 17 through the 21st. Finally, this calendar also meets the requirement of 1,025-plus hours, which we think is critical. To meet these new requirements, instead of adding the days, those five additional days at the end of the calendar, it was important for us to look at a way to offer remote learning in conjunction within the calendar. So we are asking to join optional teacher workdays with remote learning for students. On these days, teachers will send assignments home the day prior to the optional teacher workday. Students will work on those tasks at home, and the teacher will continue whatever he or she had planned to do on that optional teacher workday. They do not, per the mandate, have to be synchronous with students in teaching via remote technologies. We will make sure that there is remote assistance or technical assistance for students on those five optional teacher workdays. The goal of this strategy is to create more instructional time for students while maintaining the length of employment for teachers because their contract is 215 days. So again, we have the bookends of when we can start, when we can stop, and employing our staff for 215 days. Additionally, the 2021 school year will be the last year that Buncombe County Schools qualifies for a winter waiver. That is due to the fact that we have missed fewer than eight days during the winter seasons over the past several years. As such, the benefit of having that winter waiver for one more year, we can use up to five remote days for makeup. So Buncombe County Schools will have to have a plan that is shared with staff and family, developed with staff and shared with families prior to winter season as to how remote learning could occur during winter months. And we will certainly be glad to do that. You'll know that the first day is August 17. That is scheduled to be an in-person day. We will certainly work with EOC, Governor Cooper's Division, HHS, to make sure whatever learning, whatever days in school meet the requirements of health and safety at the time. The positive that our staff felt with this revised calendar is it did provide for two weeks of winter break, so that was a positive. And we will take this very complicated calendar before you. We will have it translated, so families will have access, and it will be an easier-to-read format for families. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Board, do you have questions for Ms. Swanger? Mr. Bryant?
I have a couple. August, can you explain what the five additional learning days? I know you said it, but I still don't understand. We were already going to be in school then, the 17th through the 21st.
Those are in face-to-face instructional days. We have to designate those five in-person days because the General Assembly said that remote learning could not occur before the sixth day. So we're stating that those first five days are face-to-face instruction.
So they're not really additional learning days?
No. We'll have those five days, and then we will start counting hours to meet that 1,025 the following week.
So those days won't count in terms of, I mean, they're numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. That's my confusion. If we're counting them as days towards the 185, why wouldn't they also be counted in the hours?
We were trying, we were meeting both ways. What the law says is the school calendar should, is to include 190 days of instruction. And we could do one of two formulas. We could do 185 days plus the five remote instructional days, or 1,025 hours that includes remote learning plus the additional five days. And we think it is important to have as much instructional time as possible, so we took the second of the options given by the state. Dean, did I explain that well?
Yeah, yeah. You had to have 185 days plus five extra days plus five remote days, or 1,025 hours plus five days plus five remote days. The five remote, the remote hours count towards your hour, or the remote days count to your hour requirements, but not to the day requirements. So it's very confusing. So, but what's important is, I think, two things. One, you probably already had 1,025 hours in your old calendar, plus several more days. But you had to, the second thing is, but you had to designate on your calendar what were those five additional days. And so that's the 17th through the 21st of.
I guess, I guess if I'm confused, and though some of us in the room are confused, maybe some semantic, additional learning days? Before we get that out to the public, could be something different? Because the guy on the street corner is going to go, "What do you mean additional learn? I don't understand why that's additional learning days. That's the first day of school."
This calendar will be for internal, to meet the letter of the law. The family-friendly calendar will be, "I'm in school," or "I'm in an optional remote learning environment."
And in my second question, and I should know this because of the number of years I've served, but help me to understand again, Ms. Swanger or Dr. Baldwin, an optional teacher workday by law and by statute means what? Because when I see remote learning going on there, in my mind, the optional is removed.
Teachers may have the option to work or take leave that day, just as any optional teacher workday. The law states that we must have two days in the calendar that teachers can work and take accrued leave, vacation leave, and those are the purple days that you see. And then we choose to put in optional teacher workdays and designated teacher workdays to accomplish the task. But in this case, the optional teacher workdays will serve as those five remote days that students will be working independently at home. Teachers will do whatever they normally do on that optional teacher workday. If they are working in the building, they are doing professional development, or working in their classrooms, or whatever their agenda says for that day, or they may opt to take leave. We will not mandate that they work those days, but they will provide assignments for students prior to.
Prior to. So there will, there won't be any requirement for them, and I'm thinking more of the older kids, high school, and there won't be any distance learning or anything going on that day, that there'll be office hours where they've got to respond to people or anything like that?
They will be, they will not be responsible to have any. Mr. Bryant, they will not be responsible to have any interaction with students that day.
And my last question is, we've gone back and forth on this, I know as a board, but it's an optional teacher workday of November the 3rd. That's federal election day. So many of our campuses are used as election sites. Do we want to look at that? I don't know the answer.
Right now, that day is listed as an optional teacher workday. Students will be working remotely at home on assignments, and that will be counted in the hours of attendance. If the board could do, we could make it an op, it could remain an optional teacher workday, it might be a day that teachers are allowed to work remotely. We can have that discussion as we see closer to election and see the state of where we are, health and safety-wise.
I would think if we had some flexibility with that, it's heightened times. It will be an important day. There will be a lot of folks, that's a day in our schools, that there's going to be a lot of people and a lot of things going on into, A, work, but B, be working and not yourself if you choose to exercise that right to vote, to be able to do it. And I know we have other options with early voting, but sometimes those things get biased. And I just, I wanted to just throw that out there, and I'll stop talking. I've taken too much time.
We have a lot of discussion about election day and the masses that could be expected, but right now, we're not sure what election day will look like. So we can certainly revisit that at the board's pleasure.
I understand that.
On the optional teacher workdays with the digital learning, will students be required to participate in that? Or is it enrichment, or is it actually a part of the curriculum?
It will be a time for them to have independent practice, and they are required to participate.
Okay. Thank you.
We're expecting Power School to have guidance for us as to how attendance is checked or students log in, so we'll wait for that to come.
Thank you.
Do you have questions from board members?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I have, I have a question.
Just a second. Amy.
I yield to Amy in all due time.
Okay. Amy, go ahead.
So the optional teacher workday, since it's coinciding with the remote learning, can the teachers do their workday from their home? And that still be considered a workday as opposed to an annual day?
Generally, in the past.
Do they have to go into the building?
Generally, in the past, teachers have had optional teacher workdays in their classroom. With COVID-19, we have changed some of those rules because of the safety and the requirements we have been met from the governor's office. We'll have to look at that at the time to see, are we allowed to be in the building or are we not? So we will have to look at those individually. Preferably, they have the chance to work inside their classrooms, but again, we'll have to see where we are at that time period.
Okay. Ms. Queen?
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to revisit the question I think Mr. Bryant raised about election day.
Sorry, Max, can you speak up, please? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Can the microphone?
How about this?
Yes.
Better?
Is that better, Cindy?
Can't tell yet.
Okay. My question is, with the election day on November the 3rd, how many of our campuses are used as polling sites? Do you know?
Uh.
I'm going to say 16 to 20, something. I think somewhere in that ballpark.
17 to 20?
I think so. 17 to 20, so almost half. And I guess the question is, with this being, you know, presidential year, and the numbers of people who will probably turn out to vote, is there, was there, was there discussion about just basically having that day closed to our, to our schools?
If we closed, we would have to have an annual leave day, and we just didn't have another one to put in the calendar. Those are the blue days, the light blue.
I'm wondering about assigning that as an optional teacher workday and assigning students similar to what we're talking about.
What we could do.
I just have a variety of concerns that pop in my head about the traffic volume, people on our campus. We talk about safety and security issues, and intermingling all that with 1,000 students on a campus is sort of unsettling to me.
Students won't be in, in school that day. They'll be working remotely from home.
On the 3rd, November 3rd? Okay, okay. We're good then.
What we can do to make sure that our staff feel safe, we could also work to make a plan for those who wish to, to work on that optional teacher workday. They might be able to work remotely in this one case because of safety.
I'm with you there.
And we can have that discussion.
Thank you very much.
I think that's a great idea to add, is, Mr. Bryant said that flexibility piece in, and that's certainly something. Of course, you know, again, the only certainty is uncertainty about what's ahead for us with this school year. So, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of crystal balling to project to November, and that's, a lot of things can happen, but the flexibility piece makes a lot of sense. So I think that's very legitimate.
Absolutely. And we'll monitor that and make sure, because we have time to make a plan that works for all. I think the difference is that we've got to do a good job explaining that teachers have their role in assigning prior to, and making sure that students have things that they can independently practice, not new learning on those remote learning days, and then that we have a plan for winter for remote learning days, and that teachers, that students understand on those remote learning days what their student responsibility is. And we will do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the new calendar. I should say the 2020-2021 academic calendar as presented. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Was that Amy?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. That's Donna. And so now I have to call the roll. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant's got his thumb up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. That has been a, that's a monumental task on a good day. On a rainy day, it is a tough nut to crack. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Hawcrack Elementary School additions and renovations project to set, accept the GMP and authorize C-MAR to proceed. Mr. Fairley is the person in charge. Do members of the board have questions? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this recommendation.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Oh, Max, thank you. All those in favor, by roll call. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant's got his thumb up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
And Anne Franklin. That one passed. Thank you. Next item, authorization of lottery application for Estes Elementary 3 Classroom addition design. This is a Mr. Fairley also. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. I'm sorry? Is there a question? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a sec, a second, please?
Second.
Uh-huh. That's Peggy. And now it's time to call your name again. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant's got his thumb up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
And me. So that passes. Next item on the agenda is the Emma Elementary School Roofing Project. Approval of the change order. That's also Mr. Fairley. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Donna. A second?
Second, that.
Thank you. And now we'll call the roll. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant's got his thumb up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
And Anne Franklin. That one passes. So now we're on the Inca Middle School Roof Replacement Project. Authorization to award a contract. That's also Mr. Fairley. Questions from the board? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Was that Max?
Yes.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Okay. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant, thumbs up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Thank you. That's, it passes. Now, Cantler Elementary School, award of Phase II re-roofing contract, also Mr. Fairley. Mr. Fairley's been busy this month. I would ask if there are questions from the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Mr. Fairley.
Mr. Fairley, I understand that the Candler Elementary School came back, I think, we're in excess of maybe eighty-one thousand dollars completed projects. Is that correct? And I also know from, through the, through Buncombe County, that the School Capital Fund Commission is being brought to a special meeting tomorrow about approving that as moving some funds that were previously approved by the School Capital Fund Commission toward this project. And you will be present for that to make the commission understand how that is occurring, correct?
That is correct.
All right. And I would also tell this board that when Mr. Fairley made the original presentation to the School Capital Fund Commission, he did bring up the possibility that there may be, in some cases, unforeseen circumstance that are encountered, such as this case, that might cause a deviation in, in the cost of a project. However, there would be savings found in other places, and it's just a matter of the, there's no change in the total amount. It's just a matter of using the money appropriately where it is needed.
That's correct.
All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to?
Well, and thanks for asking that question, because really, the, the item should be modified slightly, that your approval is contingent upon the, ultimately, the county commissioners approving this at their June 16th meeting. We would expect that to happen. The School Capital Fund Commission has to go through their process first, and then make that recommendation to the commissioners. So, if we could add that, we're not going to let a contract out to this, to the low bid contractor until the county commissioners actually approve that transfer of funds.
That is correct.
Ms. McPhee, did you get that wording?
Yeah.
And so, Mr. Queen, would you like to?
Madam Chair, I, just for Dean, real quick, that we need to formally do anything that's different than what, what's laid out here for us tonight in terms of, I don't want us to approve something that we can't approve and then have to come back later if, see what I'm asking, if there's still some other things that.
Yeah, and that's not unusual in.
So, we're okay.
In any school construction funding project, happens all the time. So, I don't have any problem with the board moving forward with its current recommendation, and, you know, worst-case scenario, Mr. Fairley would just report back to the board.
I would think that this, this project, Pat, is somewhat time-sensitive. Works going on, and in order to avoid a stoppage of that work, waiting for this process to occur, I think it's the dominoes. We're meeting today, and immediately following our meeting, that we say, yes, we approve this to continue. School Capital Fund Commission's doing a special call meeting tomorrow, and that is just to meet the timeline for the county commissioners next Tuesday. So, we're just doing our best to keep the work flowing and not have any kind of issues with the contractor having to remobilize, if you will. Yeah, no, I didn't, I, I understood that. I just wanted to make sure from a, this particular way of doing it with the special call, School Capital Fund Commission meeting is not something we have encountered before, I don't think. So, that's why I asked the question, just from that.
I think we're good.
Yep. And in fact, we, we did float this whole idea past the county commissioner, or not the county, well, Buncombe County's legal folk, the attorney to the School Capital Fund Commission, and they, in fact, suggested doing it this way.
All good.
Very good.
All right, that being said, we want to approve this contingent upon?
County Commissioner approval of the requested transfer of funds between two already-approved Article 39 projects.
Correct.
Okay. Did, those of you that are virtual, did you hear that and understand it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Could you, could you say it again, please, just to make sure that I heard it right?
Go ahead, Mr. Fairley.
The, your approval this evening would be contingent upon the county commissioners' approval of the transfer of funds between two already-approved Article 39 projects.
Okay, questions from the board? Then I would entertain a motion to approve this item with the addendum. So, could I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And could I get a second?
Second.
This is Cindy, I'll second.
Thank you. Now, I'll call the roll. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
And Pat's got his thumb up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. All right, the next item on the agenda is the sewer easement request on B Road. This is also Mr. Fairley. And are there questions from members of the board regarding this item? Yes, Mr. Bryant?
I have one, Mr. Fairley. How did we wind up with this property? It, was it, is it all that's left of other land we've sold over time, or gotten rid of?
I can only assume that. I'm, I'm not sure. I didn't research why this landlocked, remote piece of property.
In the floodplain?
Is the property of the Board of Education. It could have been part of a much larger parcel that was let go. This property has, it's, it's so bisected and the, the topography is so bad, it probably wasn't a very attractive piece of property for someone to buy and pay taxes on. So, my speculation is that it was bisected with this MSD sewer easement. Other property may have been sold off, and this was just left as.
What was left?
School board property. But, that's pure speculation. I haven't gone, done the research.
I lived in this area, and I'm familiar with the topography of that property. I'm surprised at being landlocked, essentially. I don't know that there's a regular road that, that fronts it in any way. But, in any event, I guess the, the question is, I look at their proposed sanitary line connection, and it almost appears to me that if they went in a different direction, and I, I'm not so certain, that they could intersect the existing sewer line without even encroaching upon our property. If, if our property line is outlined by the red line, and their property is outlined by the blue line, they could intersect an existing MSD sanitary line that runs along, adjacent to their property line on the blue line, north to south, essentially, to the black line, black dotted line. And they have, even at their low point, it appears that they would have opportunity to intersect back there rather than the direction they're proposing. Is there, is there a reason why?
Anticipating that type of question, Mr. Queen, I asked a member of the design team to attend the meeting, and if, if it's okay, I would ask that Chris Day be recognized, and.
Absolutely.
He can answer your question. He's a civil engineer. Chris?
Hello, Chris Day, Civil Design Concepts. While I could hear there was a question going on, I could not hear the specifics of what your question was outside, Mr. Queen.
I, I'm simply looking at the information that was shared with us, and it's showing the outline of the on B Road property proposed for development, outlined in blue. The property owned by Buncombe County outlined in red. And there's a line, basically, it's an arrow saying proposed sanitary sewer line extension, going from a point on your blue line across property I don't know who would own, but then coming on and intersecting the sewer line after coming, I think, a hundred and fifty feet across our property into this line. I guess my question is, why not just angle it? It would be a closer point of connection to existing sewer line. You wouldn't even have to run your connection as far, unless it's just the topography or the gravity-fed nature of the line.
So, it's primarily the fact that, that the, the parcel owner there will not entertain the, the idea of an easement. So, this is an extension of an existing subdivision under development, and they too, they're just north of our blue, the, the existing subdivision is just north, and that property ties in just above. So, what you don't see on this is, is the, that field where you're speaking of is, is all one parcel. And so, the, the property to the north, it tapped into that same sewer, but just north of this parcel. This property owner, unfortunately, and I'm not privy to all the conversations, but was not interested in, in having a sewer easement on, on there. The next parcel down, which is just north of the school's property, they, they were fine with an easement. And so, they've already negotiated out an easement through that yard, which then leads to this landlocked parcel we're here before you. But, that was, while the, the line you make reference to is closer, it just was not feasible due to coordination and negotiation.
This property when developed, will it be accessed off of on B Road?
Yes, sir.
And how many, I understand it was single-family homes?
Single-family homes.
How many are planned for that?
So, the existing phase under construction is somewhere in the seventy to eighty range number of homes. This adjacent fifteen-acre parcel with the topography can support another thirty to forty homes.
So, the seventy to eighty are in process of being built now?
They are.
And this will be an additional thirty or forty?
This will be an additional thirty or forty.
Okay. So, we're expecting about a hun, roughly a hundred plus?
Yes, sir.
And that, that will, just for the board's information, that will fall in the Sand Hill Elementary School, School District, Inca Middle School, intermediate school, and high school. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Day? Thank you, Mr. Day. Any other questions for Mr. Fairley? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. That's Cindy, I think.
That was, that was Peggy.
It was Peggy? I apologize, Peggy. Now, for the roll call. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant's got a thumbs up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Did I call her name twice? No, sorry.
Did you hear me? Aye.
Yeah, I've, I've got you. Thank you. Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
And Anne Franklin. That is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Fairley. The next item on the agenda is the approval of student parking lot fees. That's Mr. Huff. Are there questions from the board concerning this item?
I have a question slash comment.
All right.
This is Cindy. I can't tell, is Mr. Huff in the room? Do I need to wait for him?
No, he's in the room.
I don't know. Okay, good. I can't see from here. So, just, I, I think it's perfectly appropriate that after all these years, we should consider increasing these fees in order to cover the cost of the security. But, it's a big jump all at one time, and so, I'm just wondering why the board hasn't done this sooner, and, and would like to put in a request that we do incremental increases along the way after this, rather than waiting all these years and then doing a big leap? Because it, it's harder for folks to swallow.
Appreciate your question, Ms. McMahon. I, I would, I would propose to you, that's exactly what we're doing, because with the fifteen dollars, that really gets us from, from only covering half of those security guard and the need that we have for them, just the two-thirds. We would like for that, to cover that completely, but in order to do so, we would literally have to take the forty-five and double it. So, this, this really is exactly, I feel, what you're talking about. And fifteen, we feel like is, is much more appropriate than asking for a forty-five fee increase.
So, in the future, can we do some, some gradual increases then to get us where we need to go, rather than waiting and doing another big leap?
Yes, ma'am, we sure can.
All right, other questions?
I do have a question, and Dr. Baldwin might be able to answer this. I was just curious, do you know if any of those positions are funded through the Buncombe County supplement?
Any of the security guard positions?
Through the Buncombe County what?
The supplement from Buncombe County. Local, yeah, local.
Local current expense?
Right.
That service has been paid through, ever since I've been, well, as a high school principal years ago, it, it was paid for, it's always been paid for through funds raised through the parking fees.
Okay, okay.
Because it was really specific to the traffic control, and originally, it was monitoring those vehicles in the parking lots.
Okay. Very well, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Pate. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, we'll vote. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant, thumbs up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. Motion pa, passes. Now, we go to approval of addendum to driver's education contract with Mountain Professionals Incorporated for 2019-2020, and that is Mr. Huff and Tiffany McCants. Are there questions for these staff members?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Okay.
If a student has paid these fees and then does not return to school, will they be reimbursed?
I think that would be appropriate to, to expect that. That would be something I would talk with Mr. Ledford, with Mountain Professionals, to confirm the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
Mr. Huff, does the impact of, I think today, the State House, hadn't passed the Senate yet, and obviously not in front of the governor, but usually if it gets out of the house, it's got a pretty good chance, and it was pretty bipartisan. There, it looks like they're delaying ninety days, I think, of, they're delaying, if the student has passed the coursework, there's a ninety-day window of time that's being proposed in legislation to not have to have your driver as part of it, to still get your license and be able to drive with some stipulations on parents and that kind of thing. Does, if that goes forward, does that impact this? And, and/or are we covered in the language here? Because the last paragraph, I think, of the memo, the Buncombe County Schools and Mountain Professionals agree to monthly payments contingent upon availability of executive orders or administrative changes brought about by the Governor General Assembly. So, is, maybe it's a question for Dean, does that kind of cover us there, if this goes through the Senate and the governor signs it, and we're then working with a different set of parameters?
I think if they gave an extension, it really wouldn't have any bearing on the way we typically fund Mountain Professionals. Because what we typically do, and Dr. Baldwin, and correct me if I'm wrong, or appropriate staff member, is we just pass our allotment on to them, and they're expected to drive everybody, you know, to take care of everybody who signs up. So, I think if there's, what happened is, they, they might be a little bit busier because of this year's students, but those students have been paid for. So, I don't necessarily think that any change in the legislature, this flexibility added by the General Assembly, would, would cause us any particular issues, other than some logistical issues and making sure all of our kids get scheduled and get completed, complete the, the road course.
It's, it's a fairly significant backlog that they have in terms of driving, so if that were to come through the Senate as well and be passed, I mean, I think it would, it, it might in some ways diminish the rationale for having this addendum, but I don't think it handcuffs us to any type of, of abnormal payment or.
Correct.
Increased payment.
The real, one of the real reasons behind that last sentence in paragraph one is if for some reason, the allotment, if for some reason, the allotment got cut significantly, or at all, really, from the General Assembly or the Department of Public Instruction, we had the ability to go back and, and renegotiate that on those kinds of terms.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Then I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant, he's got his thumbs up. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. Motion passes. Now then, um, the last item is the policy for approval, and we're asking, Ms. Swonker's asking for us to waive the first reading and adoption of the policy, and that is remote participation in board members. And are there questions from the board members regarding this item?
Madam Chair, this is Cindy. I have one question. One thing that popped out at me about this policy is that if one of us has technical difficulties, I think this, if memory serves, this may have happened to Peggy last time, where she had to drop off for a little while and then she managed to come back. And so it just, it puts a lot on Kim to keep track of who is on when and what are they missing, and then to somehow, so Dean, does she have to note that in the minutes? If there's a chunk of the meeting that she's not there for it, then Kim needs to include that in the minutes? That just seems like a lot to manage. So how, how do we make sure that works?
It's in the statute.
A little louder.
It's in the statute. That's why it's in the policy. In regards to the logistics of that, I think we're, it's just up to us to attempt to, attempt to catch it when somebody drops off. Certainly, if you dropped off right now, it'd be relatively easy because we can see you, and then we wouldn't be able to. Uh, Ms. Buchanan might be a little bit more difficult, but we still have a marker that denotes that she's up there. So it's not easy, but, you know, I think it's on us to attempt to try to catch that.
Kim, you feel up to that challenge?
I think I'll be okay.
Are, are the Zoom participant portion, because I know the Zoom meetings can be recorded, are they being recorded as well? Can they be?
They can.
I mean, that might create some less logistical issue if we're recording it and we're not sure when somebody dropped off or whatever, and you can go back and look at it. Just a thought.
That would give us, that would give us a backup.
It gives a backup too, right?
We can certainly record it.
And do we need to worry about that for the minutes from last month?
What does that mean?
When we didn't have this policy yet, so Kim didn't know she was supposed to be keeping track of that?
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Cindy, I've got two conversations going on here, and I am really good, but I'm not that good. So, um, would you do that again, please?
Do we need to worry about the minutes from last month, is what I'm asking, since we didn't have this policy yet, so Kim didn't know she was supposed to be keeping track of when we were all on and when we were not, and so we don't have that in the minutes? Are we, are we okay?
I would think we are.
Yes.
That's a legal question, I think, right?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think. This law came in after, after our meeting last month, if I don't, if I remember correctly.
It's fairly recent.
So I don't believe, no, we took roll call last month too, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Because we did the new law.
Dropped off for just a few minutes and then we got her mad on the phone, not on video.
That in the minutes? If we could just all agree that that should be noted in the minutes, then we'll be fine.
I believe we can. Do I have to do the roll call for that? I believe we've got agreement there. Thank you. Thank you for calling that to our attention. So now we need to vote on the, this policy. All those in favor? No, 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 I have to have a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Cindy. I move that we approve this policy.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Donna. Now, now we have Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant?
Aye.
Holy moly, Amy Churchill?
You weren't looking!
Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. We also need to note, um, that in regards to the personnel report, we have two people that have family members that are working for us, neither of which are supervised by a family member, and that would be Taylor Baldwin and Pat Bryant's daughter.
Caitlin Burnett.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes. That's true. And that's that Donna Pate has a family member on there, who would be?
Denise Montgomery.
Montgomery, yep. Denise. Now that we have acknowledged that, I would move to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda are the minutes from May 7, the regular, and a regular meeting open session, minutes from May 7, special call work session, personnel report with the addend, addendum, records, retention, and disposal request, renewal driver's education contract for Mountain Professionals, approved 2019-2020 facility report, Buncombe County Schools proposed federal programs for 2020-2021, approval 403B voluntary retirement plans, and policies for second reading, policy 4700 student records, and policy 5071 and 7351 electronic stored information retention. And I would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Peggy Buchanan, will you vote, please?
Aye.
Pat Bryant, he's working that thumb. Amy Churchill?
Aye.
Cindy McMahon?
Aye.
Pat Bryant, oh, shoot. Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Pate. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, and so now we need to vote on adjournment. Peggy Buchanan?
Aye.
Pat Bryant, thumbs up. Amy Churchill?
Um, aye.
Uh-huh. Cindy McMahon?
Very hearty, aye.
Oh, yeah. Donna Pate?
Aye.
Max Queen?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. We are adjourned.